We have a public hearing first.
Public hearing called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilmember McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamey. Councilman Hatmaker. Councilman Farr.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Public hearing this evening is on ordinance number 650. That's for the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. Is anyone here that would like to speak on that? Speak now or forever. Hold your peace. Public hearings adjourned. Regular meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilmember McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamey. Councilman Hatmaker. Councilman Farr. Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. The prayer this evening will be given by Councilman McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for all the many blessings of life. Father, thank you for good health. I pray for this meeting. I pray that you'd be with us as we conduct business for the City of Clinton. God, I pray that you'd give us wisdom and that we would do those things according to your will. Thank you for the city. Thank you for the staff, the employees that work each day. I pray for protection upon them and their family. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. Hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated May 18th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitors or citizens with grievances or praises. We'll take the praises first. Thanks for that laugh, Greg. I appreciate that. Communications from the mayor. I do have a couple of appointees on several boards. First of all, for CUB, Dr. Violet's term has ended on July 1st, 2020. I would like to reappoint her to that position again, term ending July 1st, 2024. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. With Clinton E-911, Emergency Communications District, I have three that I would like to reappoint. Archie Brummett, Rick Scarborough, and Bill Riggs. Term is ended July 1st, 2020. They're...
Can we know when they're going to be there?
Wow.
Roll call. Speech.
Term ending July 1st, 2024. Do you hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. And I have one more. The Library Board. I'd like to appoint to a three-year term, term ending June 30th, 2023, I'd like to appoint Catherine Smith to that term. Do you hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Oh, and I do have one more. Y'all meet on this one? A lot?
Yeah.
Okay. You're doing a good job?
Yeah.
Okay. AC Tourism Council Advisory Board, I'd like to reappoint Jason Brown to the one-year term, June 30th, 2021 will be the term date. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor, we're not done yet. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Must have been even fantasy football.
I don't know about that. I'd have. That's all I have. So Kelly, do you have a report? Okay. City School Board report, Kelly Johnson. Good to see you live.
I know. It feels so strange being back here. This is fabulous. I'll keep it short and sweet tonight. Just wanted to give you all an update on where we stand with the reopening of school. We are planning on reopening Clinton City Schools on time this year. We've been working very diligently over the past few weeks to create a reopening plan. So what that plan consists of is what we want to do and what we hope to do, but then we've got a Plan B, C, and D in case that doesn't come to fruition. So what we did is we followed several protocols and looked at several different national, state, and local guidance on reopening schools. And we have a plan for coming back brick and mortar, which is what we're going to move forward with. But then if for some reason something happens and we're unable to do that, we also have a plan for all virtual. We have a plan for if we needed to do and divide the school into cohorts and do a Group A and a Group B, and some go to school on Monday, Wednesday, some go on Tuesday, Thursday. We have a plan for that, which would be our most unfavorable plan, but if we had to implement that. And then also, we have an intermittent to where if we could go to school for a while, but if numbers peaked and then we needed to go virtual for a while, then come back in the building when it's safe to do so. And so we've got all four of those plans tapped out. We're going to move and go forward live with our brick and mortar plan on Monday, so that will be released to the public with specifics of all of the different precautions that we are putting into place. We're going to put that out there, and then if there are certain parents that still do not feel comfortable, given their family, unique circumstances, that it's safe for their children to return back to school this time, we will also be offering a virtual option for those parents as well, to where they can still remain enrolled in Clinton City Schools, but receive all of their instruction virtually. So after we go and move forward with that plan on Monday, we're going to request that parents fill out a survey to indicate to us if they plan to come back brick and mortar, or if they plan to return to us virtually. So all of that is going to come out, and in that plan, it will be broken into several different considerations. So there'll be a component of what are the academic considerations we have for reopening, our operational considerations that we have, and then also our staff, student, and family considerations. So that reopening plan will be divided into those three different categories. So we look forward to going live with that on Monday. So with that, that's our biggest announcement. So we're just working fast and furious on getting that to happen. Our summer meals are continuing through tomorrow, so June 30th. We are going to continue the meals at North Clinton Elementary School. And then beyond that, we are continuing on a limited basis, some ethra meals. We're partnering with Oak Ridge City Schools and Airmark to make sure some of the parents who don't have transportation to come and get those meals, and our most needy families, we're going to continue to deliver meals through July 17th to about, it's going to be about 60 meals a day that we will continue to deliver through the ethra meals through July 17th. But that's an update on Clinton City Schools. Any questions for me on reopening or the past few weeks of COVID craziness?
How about the new addition and just construction parking lots?
Okay, so the Wiggles and Giggles parking lot is complete, and we have one more side of a wooden fence that we're going to put up here in just a little bit, but it is complete and ready to go. I'll let Scott kind of give a little bit more of an update on the expansion of Clinton Elementary, but it's going well. The walls are up. We're on time to hopefully open up the weekend after school starts. So it won't be open the first day of school, but should be open within the first week of school. So on track with that.
Let me ask you one question back to the school starting back. It's funny, we have a calendar on the refrigerator, and we flipped it over to July, and Tracy realized, hey, I'm going back to work this month. It's like, it goes by real fast. But anyway, let's say, you know, is there going to be a line where, how many positive tests do you have to go to a different, go more virtual, or is there a line in the sand, so to speak, like there's one, or there's five, or there's 10?
There will. We will. I think what you saw in the spring was if there was a case in the district, the entire district shut down, you're not going to see schools do that this go around. It's going to be more on a case-by-case basis. So if we had one positive case in a classroom, it could be possibly that we send that classroom home for a period of time, but we don't shut down the entire school. But if we have a case at South Clinton, we don't intend that we're going to shut down Clinton Elementary School. And so it's going to really be done more on a case-by-case basis, and what that exposure looked like, and how long they were exposed. And so we'll be consulting with Anderson County Health Department and the Tennessee Health Department on that.
So those classrooms, they'll stay together the whole day? I mean, is that...
As much as possible, yes. Especially in the primaries. What, we're going to do breakfast in the classroom, to where students can come straight into the school and report straight to a classroom, instead of, what we're trying to do is keep the cohorts together as much as possible, to where if at all possible, we are not putting more than two classes together at one time. That way, if there is an exposure, we know exactly what kids have been exposed, and we know exactly who we need to notify. So when we look at the cafeteria, we're reworking the cafeteria, the logistics of that, and the schedule to where they'll be spread out, and some classes may be eating in their classroom. At Clinton Elementary, some may be eating in the commons area there, right outside the cafeteria. When we go outside, we're not going to have more than two classes at a time outside. So for instance, at Clinton Elementary, when fourth grade goes outside, two will go out in the front, and two will go out in the back. That way, if we did have a positive case, we would know exactly who those, the kids were that had been with that exposure. So a lot of thought, a lot of thought and consideration has gone into it, but we're...
You know, something that Rob and I went through when we were in high school, I think it was our 10th grade year, Gann was there, the high school was removing asbestos in the school. So I think they went Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, the upper third of the class, or the, I think the high school part went three days, and the junior high, back then junior high, went Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yes. I was part of that junior high crew that got to go on Saturdays. I remember that.
It's different, but it's just, you know, we had our challenge too for a full year.
Yeah. We've heard from the majority of our parents that are excited about schools coming back, as long as we have some precautions, you know, into place. We'll have some that just due to family circumstances. It's just they don't feel it's safe, and so we want to honor that as well, and give them the option to go virtual until they feel comfortable coming back.
Well, I think after six months, I think the parents are really excited about school getting started. I think so. I can't speak. So anyway, thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There is a budget amendment that will require your approval. In my memo, there is a typo or some error, and it's a $1,000 error in the budget amendment. I don't think it's material to anybody's decision, but I'd be happy to dive into that a little bit more if you want me to. Overall, we have a decrease in budgeted expenditures. We started prior to the budget amendment with a slight surplus for the year. That surplus will go down by about $20,000. So we'll wind up with a budgeted surplus of around $10,000. It'd be my recommendation that you approve the budget amendment for the general purpose.
Do I hear a motion for approval of budget amendment number five?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
So the Scribner's error that he referenced, how does that affect, does it affect it at all?
If you want to read out the motion just to be...
Sure. Gail's had it corrected, and it should be corrected in her overall budget amendment that she presents.
As I was.
For the city.
I'm good.
So it should be wrapped up in your total, but I'd be happy...
Are you fine with that, Gil? Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Stamey. Councilman Hatmaker. Councilman Farr.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes. Budget amendment number five passes. So you want to talk about the expansion a little bit?
Sure. I mean, I guess the quick is that we're about 60% complete at June 30th tomorrow. We're on track for Friday, August 7 is our completion date, which is approximately 15 days beyond our original contracted completion date, but that was due to weather and rock. The rock was, obviously you don't know what's there until you start excavating. Unfortunately, all of our exploratory drillings, they just happened to miss the rock. And I guess the sad part about it is we had a $70,000 contingency built into the contract. Well, about 50, 60,000 of that is gone for rock excavation. They had to break the rock. So that was a monetary issue and a time issue. So that's where we lost our days. But I don't anticipate it being a disruption to school at all, to our opening.
Okay. Any questions for Scott?
I'm assuming it's goods and supplies and equipment, all that's on order?
Yeah, my biggest concern was like the HVAC equipment. The only hiccup I've heard is some of the fire dampers that go in between the walls were on back order, and that's just a matter of the masons had to build the wall, and then the HVAC contract will unfortunately now have to cut, install those smoke dampers.
What about like school equipment itself? Like what's desks, tables?
Desks and tables. I'm not fully furnishing them yet, because we're not going to be at 100% capacity this year.
Okay.
But I have ordered desks for social distancing.
Right.
And then we will utilize those desks in the new classrooms when things get back to some degree of normalcy.
Got you.
Anything else? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Clinton Regional Planning Commission report, Councilman Gann.
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission met on June 8th in social distancing, open meeting. Deferred Business, Blake Harden requesting final plat review for property located at 1413 Eagle Bend Drive. That was withdrawn at the request of the applicant. Applicant Ken White requesting preliminary PUD site plan review for property located at Leonard Street. That also was withdrawn at the request of the applicant. We did review agricultural overlay district draft, and we also reviewed non-residential accessory structures, temporary mobile home factory-built, our factory-assembled structure, looking at drafting a resolution or something to pass on to council about that. No action was taken, just discussion on that, about what we were looking for. Then the Board of Zoning and Appeals also meeting the same night. Applicant Andrew Falette requesting side setback variance to three feet for the property located at 615 Vista Drive, properties zoned R1. This was a replacement. He had two different decks, and this was being replaced by a single deck to wrap around the house. And after looking at it and feeling that it was consistent with the neighborhood and everything, Board of Zoning Appeals did approve that. Any questions?
Any questions for Larry?
Larry, I had one, under the Planning Commission meeting, the two applicants that we drew their paperwork, I guess. Is it just that was a lack of, they needed some more stuff to proceed? Or...
I think on one, there was an issue. I don't know exactly what the, there was a potential issue about getting approval. There was some, some discussion, I think as far as some of the neighbors in one of them, that probably led to maybe consideration of withdrawing. And I don't really know what the other one was. I think there were some issues about getting some of the permits and some of the things they had to do.
Okay. I was just wondering. Any other questions for Larry? Thanks, Larry. Clinton Utilities Board report, Councilman Farr.
Thank you. I would like to reference everyone's attention to the packet that you have. So back in third quarter 2018, this endeavor to take a look at some of CUB's policies and procedures as it pertained to residential development in both electric and water and sewer began in earnest. And over the course of the last, so, year and a half plus, what you have is, I think, before you the results. I want to just real quickly take you through that first tab. So you're a new developer to the town. You can access yourself to this guide that will walk you through the policies and procedures. You have a nice welcome letter. It has all the requisite individuals' numbers, telephone numbers, how to get in touch with them. And then it lays out clearly and easily understandable way what the policies are. And it also has, in the back, you even have a reference checklist that will take the developer through 1 through 16 if they need. Again, they also have questions of who to contact, names, numbers, and a message from our general manager directly to them. I find that this was what sort of, I was hearing this council and others and stakeholders in the community wanted to see. There's an accompanied water and sewer packet that goes with it as well. So what you have in front of you, well, we have concerned citizens that may or may not understand what CUB is doing, you have it at your fingertips. I think there's a misconception, and maybe it was, maybe it was earned in the past. I can't speak to it, but all I can tell you that our time on the board, the current board as it consists and the leadership at CUB, heard those concerns and wanted to make sure that we put out accurate information that will help combat some of the misconceptions, myths perhaps, that some of our developers and/or citizens may have. Regardless of what has happened in the past at CUB, both good and bad, we're not above looking introspectively and determining how can we get better. I think it's a great utility. I think all of us up here would say it's a great utility, but you constantly have to challenge yourself to look at the policies. Do they still work? Can we get better? And that's what we tasked our leadership at CUB to do, and I think they came through with exactly what we wanted. I want to, also, you have a PowerPoint presentation. Those of you that have been on CUB and/or the CETA board knows the general manager's affinity for PowerPoint. He has his black belt in PowerPoint presentations. So I thought that I would, in the interest of time, I would just ask that you look through it. It's some really good information, and it sort of walks through that process of what the board wrestled with for the better part of, I think, when we got to this stage, it was probably three to four months of work. And I've asked our board members that want it to be here tonight, and the general manager, if we have any questions, I wanted to give them an opportunity to make a comment or two, if that's okay, if I concede some of my time, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Would anybody like to approach and make any comments to what I've said? Steve Two, would you like to?
Sure.
We have three.
We have three Steves on the CUB board.
Did you go over the last tab where it says we will not, this is why we will not accept Keen pumps? It's 20 pages.
I would, yeah, I could, but I don't want to bore you all this evening. So, yeah, I kind of came in the middle of this process, thanks to the mayor's appointment. And so it's been, it's been interesting to kind of watch coming through in the middle of it. I think, based on what I've heard, there was a lot of discussion that, of kind of getting things tightened up a little bit and getting in the right direction, and, or at least more communication about what we were doing. And I think the management team here has done an excellent job. I think the stability of the management team, I think Zach's leadership around kind of getting the board heading in the right direction as well has been excellent. But I think the document that's there has been very productive in terms of getting anything. I know I have a copy of it for my own personal use as well, so I think it's been helpful. I think it's good to have a document, a resource like that you can get to and available. So I applaud the board. The board did a lot of work before I got there. I just kind of happened to show up at the back end. So, but I think there was a lot of work that's done previous to all that, and I know City Council's been supportive of those efforts, and we appreciate you guys as well on what you are doing. Short and sweet.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Would, Dr. Violet, would you?
I'll just ditto what Steve said. We have worked a long time to get to this point, and what I want to be sure that everybody hears is that we heard from the community, we've heard from our developers, and we responded to that. And we appreciate the leadership under Greg Fay to get us to this point, but we've covered a lot of territory, and it's a lot of sweat, blood, and tears that went into that. But I think, from what I'm hearing people say now, is that we're at a good point. We're at a good place. So thank you to the CUB leadership and the efforts of our board, but especially to you all, because that was a joint effort trying to get us to this point. So after it's all said and done, we made it. And I just want to be sure that everybody understands that we made it, and I think everyone's as happy as they can be with the product.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vicki.
Mr. General Manager, do you, I know you're never lost for words, would you?
Well, wait a minute. You have, sir, you have two minutes. It started, it started when you got out of the chair. You're down to 140.
I do want to acknowledge that we've had tremendous leadership from our board, and what both Zach and Dr. Violet, it's been very constructive, and the whole emphasis on is how can we present ourselves to our local developers in a way that they're going to feel it's going to be as positive experience as it can be without having our ratepayers subsidize and private enterprise. What this document has, and I am so ready with a thumb drive to put in for a PowerPoint, but what, you'll look through it, and I'm really available for questions. But if you look through it, it'll give you a little bit of the journey, and it'll also be very specific. The two tabs that you referenced, one on the Keen pump, I wanted to put in there because that was such a sticking point, if you'll remember. And I wanted to make sure that you understood, it wasn't a cursory review that we did. It was in-depth. And for those that are interested in going through that, I think you'll see that we gave that every opportunity. But we do have other pumps, and of course, that was an issue, and we've been able to identify those. The issue with rebates, that's a special tab too, because there's a more in-depth study on how we addressed that request from some of the developers. And the fact that we have, as far as I know, a very unique take on how we do extensions in order to meet the utility facilities, the infrastructure itself, to come up to those subdivisions. Now, we serve in parts of six counties, so we're spread out all over the place. Water and sewer generally defined mostly within Clinton and a little bit in South, we were in, not in South Clinton, we're in Claxton. And that came from when the city turned that over to us back in the 60s. So with that, that's always been a sticking point with many developers, and that is sewer, water and sewer. You need, you need public water and sewer for a lot of good development. We've got our, some of our premier residential developers, Kristy Hicks and the Hicks Family LLC, Lynn Duncan, the Urban Construction, all of that. And now I ought to start naming everybody, but we have such a premier group, and all of those are active, and all of those are building. We're expecting 56 units coming online. That contract should be signed. If it hadn't signed today, it'll be signed tomorrow. So we're looking forward to helping those folks through that. This document is for them, and it is for us, and it'll take us there. And I will answer any questions in depth for those that may have any at all. And I'll start with the mayor, which he's ready to gavel me down.
You know I have at least one question.
Yes, sir. And I've got more than one answer.
Let me ask you, I was, I was just thinking, this is, this looks like a very strong tool to use. Have we tested, have we given it to anybody, get it to Kristy Hicks or Mr. Duncan and say, hey, read through it?
We've been living under this now for a year. I mean, it goes back for over a year. So that's what we're living under right now.
They're just widening that format that we have today, correct? I mean, as far as the natural binder.
Well, yes. The handouts you see on tabs one and two, along with the tri-fold that we hand out with everybody that comes in. And again, mostly what we rely on is a conceptual interview. Come in, let us know what you're planning to do. And then we amass our many, many, many years of experience to try to offer suggestions that will complement what you're trying to do, and oftentimes save you money. And we've done that time and time again. That's what we're into. Once, once a developer sees and has in their hand what we're talking about here, that's in their memory, and it's etched in forever. So it's not like it's a reference. So it's not like it's a reference they'll continually go back to, and these are our local developers. Now, these one-off folks, it's really going to help them a lot because they're not familiar with how things roll, and this will give them an opportunity to, and a checklist for them to go by so they don't miss anything.
So the feedback so far has been?
It's been tremendously positive. It's been tremendous, because I think for multiple reasons, but first, and I think foremost, is operationally, there hasn't been drastic changes, but the way it's communicated, and I think the fact that they want it to be heard, and they were, and there was, and it was not defensive, it was a positive, and how can we help better serve you? And if we can't do what you want, then give a good explanation as to why. And a reasonable, people will agree that, at the end of the day, which they did, that wouldn't have been a good thing to do. So I haven't heard one negative thing. And in that presentation, another major developer, which you're familiar with, came to the board in April of last year and offered praise and appreciation and thanked us, and it was huge, and that they had committed to bringing it to other developers, that positive step that we made.
Anyone else? Greg, always good seeing you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just conclude, you know, everybody can get better at what they do, and I think that we're always a continual self-awareness of how we can improve. And I'm sure that there are people that would like to see us do even more. So to answer your question, it's been overwhelmingly positive. I'm sure someone somewhere tonight, when their head hits the pillow, is upset with CUB. I can promise you. But our job is to hear those concerns, if they are, if they have some, and then to address them, provide them ways to get to yes if we have a no, and if it is a no, that they understand why and the public policies behind that, and do so in a compassionate and caring way to where customer service, they feel like they've been heard, respected, and that's what we're trying to do at CUB.
Right. Thanks, Zach. Any questions for Zach? Thanks, Zach. Larry, do you have any other board committee reports?
The only thing I was thinking of, and I don't know if Roger's going to go into this, you have a report there in your packet from TPO about projects in Clinton and Anderson County that's really interesting to look at. It involves the project in Clinton and also the Edgemore project. As far as cost and anticipated dates and things like that. It's kind of interesting to look at that. It's what we've been working on.
Yeah, Edgemore is, it's a hundred and ten million dollar project, and what's nice, we're going to have the bike lanes on that road, too, which you think there could be a dream down the road to maybe, when we finish with all of our trails that we were able to connect some way, that just keeps the dream alive, so to speak, to be able to do that and connect it to all the Oak Ridge trails.
There has been a good deal of discussion between Clinton and Oak Ridge representatives and some others about, okay, what can we cooperatively do? And we're working better together, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I agree with that. Thanks, Larry. General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Mayor, budget activities. Jerry Shattuck has re-subdivided his property at 322 Edgewood Circle, which has been approved by the Clinton Regional Planning Commission. The survey identified a discrepancy on the property line with adjoining Clinton Utility Board property, resulting in a need for Mr. Shattuck to acquire point one-one acre tract from CUB. CUB has approved the transfer, so therefore, we recommend approval of the property transfer and a request authorization for the mayor to execute the transfer deed.
Hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? So this is kind of like a cleanup type deal that?
His, the way I understood it, on the deed, his property line was on the ridge top, is the way it was described. Well, he did some grade work and cut that ridge top off, so it had to clean up the deed on him.
Yet he pushed the dirt on CUB's side? You going to charge them?
In letting his lot, obviously, the dirt's now going to lay down. It was, it's the maintenance. We have no interest in that area.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Finally, I'd like to defer to Gail.
You've got your finance report and your sales tax report. Revenue's looking surprisingly better than I think what we originally thought they would. Property tax, we have exceeded our budget. We've collected over ninety-eight percent of the aggregate as of Friday, so our collection rate is very good this year. Expenditure's looking fine. Sales tax, overall county cities was up a little less than one and a half percent. That's local option. The city itself, it was up one point two-two percent. Anderson County was up almost fifty percent. Again, that goes back to the online transactions that are coming in, but sales tax surprisingly looked very good this month. Our state shared, the two big differences, state sales tax was down a little over twelve and a half percent. Gas tax was down a little over thirty-one and a half percent. So both of those are about nine thousand dollars in value, but just because our sales tax number's usually bigger. So we did see those drops this month, which those were April sales. So we expect to see probably about the same and may, maybe not quite as bad, we'll see.
Any questions for Gail?
There's a lot of questions we could ask, but really don't know. We're just kind of forecasting, looking at the rearview mirror.
Right, but it has not been, I think, quite as drastic as we thought, but every month, I think, is a new month at this point. But obviously, Anderson County has not seen the numbers that other counties have seen. We are seeing some because of the statewide, but I think we've been a little insulated from the huge drops that maybe some of the other, maybe the Nashvilles have seen.
Thank you. Roger?
Thank you, Gail. Police Department, surplus vehicle. We have removed the following vehicle from service and would request it be declared surplus and transferred to the town of Spring City Police Department in accordance with TCA purchasing guidelines. It's a two thousand and three Ford Crown Victoria with a hundred and fifty thousand miles.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. We have also removed the following vehicle from service and recommend that it be declared surplus and placed on GovDeals website for disposal. It's a two thousand and eleven Ford Crown Victoria with a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, Public Works Department, in accordance with Article Five, Section Eight of the City of Clinton Charter, I would request authorization to renew the annual contracts for materials and service for the period of July one, two thousand and twenty, to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one with the following companies, Rogers Group Incorporated for Asphalt Stone, Duracap Asphalt for Asphalt, APAC Atlantic Incorporated, Harris Construction Concrete, Superior Drainage Products for Coverts, Volunteer Highway Supply Company for Pavement Marketing.
Hear motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Also, we included on Dropbox this morning a report that Lynn Murphy did for me for the Market Street Bridge project. I think we've been getting a lot of questions about it. I don't think we've had any work for about three months. The TDOT and the contractor has told us that due to some unforeseen problems when they took off the first layer of asphalt and concrete, it's actually some rebar that has been cut. They don't know when. They've had to send it back to engineering. Engineering has sent it to Nashville. The process will take about a month in Nashville to approve it. They'll send it back to the contractor, and the contractor's telling us of probably about a two-month period before they mobilize. So we're probably looking at about three months before we see any movement on that project.
I had already asked you, but will you make sure the newspaper and WYSH gets that Lynn's document so that they can?
Can.
Lot of questions on that, and good questions, but the newspaper and WYSH would be good to?
We can do it.
Put that on there.
Recreation Department, the Clinton Community Center. The recreation staff has been developing a plan for a structured phase reopen of the Clinton Community Center in accordance with the COVID-nineteen restriction and guidelines. I tasked the director and his staff probably a month ago to start looking at this, talking with Kelly Johnson, Dr. Parrott with the schools. The format of the community center is pretty much after-school. Kids could, besides our after-school program, which is structured, other kids could just come down and hang out. With everything in the way the world is today, and especially with everything the schools have put together, it would kind of be useless if they're doing all these procedures during the day, and we're doing nothing in the afternoon. So basically, it's going to be a new way that we operate the community center. JB and Zeke is, will give just a brief version of kind of what we're working at. It's probably still, within the next four weeks, five weeks we've got, we'll probably still be tweaking it, changing it. It's going to be more of a membership-type deal with very little fees to be a member. If you're a citizen, there won't be any fee. It'd just be a card. That way, we can kind of track who's at the center. There'll be some age limit restrictions, but, you know, one of the biggest things, most of the community centers in this area already operate this way. It's just something we're having to change to, to be safe.
You got a packet here, basically.
Can you come to the podium, please? Yeah.
You got a packet there, basically, I'm getting told to go through that packet in about thirty seconds, so I don't know if I can do that or not, but I'm going to try to hit on some of the things. We're looking at trying to do a restructuring reopening, like Roger said, to correspond with the schools. If we don't do something over there, we could sit back, have some negative vibes, this, that, and the other. Also, starting back, we'll probably try to do some of our limited senior activities, but the major changes that we're going to have, I think next week, we'll have, instead of five entrances to the building, we'll only have two. We'll have the front entrance and the handicap entrance. He spoke of the age limit. We're looking at doing fourteen and under has to be accounted by adult. We're looking at a membership-type deal, where they got to have a card or something to get in. We know who's in there. And then our hours are going to change a little bit, probably open only till nine o'clock at night instead of nine-thirty. The reasons for the change, COVID-nineteen's a major reason. Safety, our facility, the people that come in, trying to keep everybody safe. The door changes was a suggestion by the police department a while back because of active shooters and this, that, and the other. So we had some issues before all this has started, but COVID and the active shooters are the reason for the safety and trying to keep an idea of who all's in the building at all times and keep our citizens safe, for one, and also the kids we got coming down there using our programs, whether it's aquatics, whether it's after-school, whatever it might be. Reasons for change also is growth. I think we can do more programs, different programs, excel some of the programs we got. We've reached out to the 4-H department here in the county. They have some cool programs that we can get involved with. We can do some different things. We're already going to probably change our after-school and not just be at the center, but also be at North Clinton, South Clinton, so we'll have three different after-schools. Just basically increasing the quality of what we got over there, making it better, making it safer. Reporting-wise, we're going to probably use a new software that, with the registration side of things, we can basically track who all's using our bowling alley, who all's using our swim, who's always using our after-school, who's coming into the weight room, and we've never really had that, whether it be an emergency, whether it be, you know, somebody looking for somebody. We've never really known who's in our building at times, basically because we got five entrances. So we can track things better. Also, our program side of things, we can tell who's doing what, how they're using it, and when they're using it.
Can you, can you take us like how that happens? I mean, as far as, you know, they're in the bowling alley?
The rec desk is the software. We've got to purchase it. I'll probably let Zeke elaborate on it because he's went through a.
So you'd have a card with a barcode on it? When you walk in, someone's going to scan that?
It's either got a barcode or it's got a code number that you can key in. With the pandemic, I'm not sure if we want to go that route, so the barcode was what we've been talking about. Anything else I missed right there?
So as far as rec desk goes, we can.
You probably need to come to the podium so the people at home can see you and hear you.
So we can set up the software to where if you say, I'm coming in, I want to go swimming, I can scan my card, and I can already have my ticket purchased on the swimming. And then I just go straight to the pool. I don't really have to contact anybody, and then once I'm in the room, then my ticket has already been locked. Does that make sense? So you can, you can basically purchase tickets and everything through that one card via online or talking to our administrative assistant. She can purchase everything there, and then as you scan, it tracks where you are going. Does that make sense?
And there will be staff there to make sure, because any time you have scanning of a card, if it's swimming, someone may be in there, they didn't purchase the swim ticket.
Yes.
I mean, there's got to be staff there that's going to police this.
The administrative assistant, she'll be in charge of most of that, and then we've got a monitoring team that'll be in charge of that.
That'll be walking around and making sure that.
Probably to start, we'll have more people working in the evening because it'll be a big change.
So, but once you're scanned, I mean, you'll have a software be able to track them exactly where they're at at any given time?
So the entire facility will be more structured. Everything will have, you know, you'll have workout times, you'll have swim times, all of that. So as you're coming in, basically, you're coming in to do a certain activity. And when you go to scan your card, it will, you will basically assign yourself to that activity, so we'll know how many people are attending said activity, if that makes sense. So you won't have barcode scanners in every room, but you'll have one, and it'll send you to certain places.
Has it been determined, like for here in Clinton, how many people are going to be able to purchase a card?
But there's still some things we got to go through.
Let me ask you one more, too, on that, too. I mean, if you go to the gym, I'm sure we're still not playing basketball. I mean.
I mean, we can track people with the swimming and the bowling side of things with money, but as far as how many people's coming to the gym that afternoon?
Is there any, what's your thought about, because I know it's going to be, especially with kids being out of school, the social distancing of being?
That's one reason why we're looking at the fourteen and under, changing the after-school. The days of just us having three, four hundred kids over there.
Yeah.
I mean, COVID-nineteen's changed everything.
So when people, kids come in with the card, you're going to check the temperature also at that time?
That'll be dependent on the CDC and Tennessee state government guidelines. As of right now, yes. For our summer camp, we check temperatures, we hand sanitize, all employees wear masks. So whatever the CDC and the state guidelines recommend is what we're going to follow.
We figured in the next five weeks, things are going to change again and again and again. So we put together something that we think will work, make things better over there, but.
And you'll scan in, but will you also scan out?
Is that right?
We can set it up either way.
Would you not want to scan out?
So you're not there.
Well, yeah, otherwise it doesn't do any good.
There's still some things we had to think about. I didn't, I hadn't really thought about that side of it.
Well, I would imagine.
And square footage, and square footage, you're going to have, allow so many people in. So, you know, you got three people wanting to come in, but you're at your capacity. So you got to wait till three leave before you can put three in. I mean, is that what we're, is that the goal? Is that what we're going for?
I mean, the way things are today, yeah, that's what we're going to try.
So do you have the staff? I mean, I think this is all good. I think, I think it's great, but it's not going to, you know, you're going to have buddies sneak in with buddies, and this buddy had a card, and these two buddies didn't have a card.
Me and him have been talking about every day about all the little variables and all the things that we're going to have issues with. Luckily, I got a good staff over there. Tank Scarborough's one of my best employees. Thank you.
And they've been working with a couple other cities. City of Farragut does this. One of their employees over there used to work for us, so she's helping them with it. So there's going to be some bugs. You know, one thing that'll come up, if you're a guest here in town and you want to come bowling or want to rent a room, there'll be a scenario where you can do that. So we'll just, it's going to be more structured instead of just open, free play, sometimes chaotic. It'll be, everything will be more structured.
Basically, in the afternoons, we got, I mean, we might have a few things going on, room rise and programs, but it's really a free-for-all just at the gym, and it's, you know, I think if we set it up right, we might be able to do some different things, like a lap walk in an afternoon, maybe some water exercises, some stuff in the afternoon. We've never done before.
You may look at maybe petitioning off the gym and having different sections for you to go into.
Like I said, I was only supposed to have thirty seconds here.
You're doing fine. You're twenty-eight seconds.
If we do this, then we'll probably have some open gym nights, you know, after six o'clock when everything calms down from school, after-school. You know, we might have a, we've never, I don't think ever done this before, a full-court night. We might have a pickleball league. We've got all kinds of things that we've been talking about that I think would be good for us over there.
So let me ask you one more question. I'll be quiet.
So you go to the community center, you get scanned, you're out there playing, next day you find out somebody's positive. You're going to have the capacity to be able to look and see who came in and shoot an email, a parent's email?
Yeah, that's the good thing about the recreation.
And maybe communicate that with the school system too?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And that's one thing, we wanted to get this out early, as soon as we get it pretty much finalized, Kelly and Dr. Parrott both have agreed to send this out with their packets so the parents know that it's going to be different. They're working also, right now, our after-school programs K through six, they're looking at something for that seventh and eighth grader too, some type of structured program we could offer for after-school. Just, we'll have to look at numbers, as I said, we're looking at doing, currently, we bus kids from South Clinton to North Clinton to be part of the after-school here. If we do an after-school at North Clinton and South Clinton Elementary and I have to do the bussin', we can take more numbers from Clinton Elementary or Clinton Middle down here for this program. So it's going to be, it's going to be some work, but we got to get the word out early too.
J B, sounds like a good plan. And again, you're not going to figure everything out, but just be flexible enough to make those changes when needed, good job, job.
J B, real quick, how many kids do you think do we serve on a, on an average Wednesday afternoon?
It probably doubles.
At least, if not triples. Wednesdays are our worst day.
Tell me about it.
I shouldn't say that that way, but it's, it's our busiest day.
Correct.
It's hard for us, the three, four, five people that we got there in the afternoons, to police everything and make sure everything's.
And it's just not hard for the recreation department, Vaughn, Chief Baker can speak up, it's our.
It's hard for everybody, the library.
Got an amen back there.
It's awful on Wednesdays.
Wednesdays are tough because this, the schools let, well, the county schools let out earlier that day. Kelly, we're not letting out early on Wednesdays, correct? I just, it just seems like an opportunity time to mention this, I, I had multiple phone calls from area businesses that have issues with unaccompanied minors on Wednesdays. And that's been a struggle, I think, for the community center as well, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we, we love our kids and we want to have programs that kids enjoy, but at the same time, the community center's not a daycare facility, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. I just, I just think we probably need to maybe liaison some with our stakeholders in the county and talk about this and what this impact may have. Because what I'm hearing is there's, there's uptick in activity with police calls, there's uptick in activity with, with misbehavior. So be ready. That's all I've got, man.
Any questions for Roger? Vaughn, I want to give you some feedback on that, this top ten report for, from a code standpoint, looked, looked really good, just keep, tell the guys, keep on it, that's doing a good job.
All right, I'll pass it on.
Thank you. Under ordinances resolutions, ordinance number, first reading of new ordinances, ordinance number six fifty-one, this is for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget amendment. Your motion for approval?
So move.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Gail, would you like to just give us an overview of what this is?
Our goal is to obviously not overspend our expenditure estimates, so that's our, my focus is being sure that I can cover expenditures. And I do that through a mixture of revenues and fund balance. Most of the time what happens when we actually close out the fiscal year is we have savings in a lot of places that I don't always take into account. So don't be alarmed by the amount of fund balance that we use, mainly, we're just trying to stay in compliance with the state's guidelines that we do not exceed expenditures.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Steny, Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman Farrar.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes. Ordinance number six fifty, fifty-one passes on first reading, first of the second reading. Under second and final readings, ordinance number six fifty, this is for the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget. Your motion for approval?
So move. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? This has been an interesting road we've been on with this, you may want to fill us in a little bit. I know when we first, I was talking to Greg when we, when I came in, you know, we're talking about when this all first happened was the pandemic that, you know, kind of playing for fifty percent cuts and this and that, and we were just like, what's going on? But we've been pleasantly surprised, April numbers were up, we kind of expect April will be, maybe will be the same as April. And, and, and I think we're in pretty good shape, we still made some, it's still bare bones budget. And I appreciate, I know y'all kind of went back and forth because, again, you were kind of driving in the dark for a while, and we still are. But I think we have a good budget. I do want to say that, you know, we'll set our tax rate, this being a, a tax year for, as far as reappraisals. I want, I want to support this wholeheartedly, but when it comes to time to set the tax rate, I want to, I'm not going to make any adjustment, I want to make the adjustments that, the reduction that needs to based on the, on the adjustments. But I've, we've heard that there's other cities that are not going to do that. I don't know if that's true or not, but I for one, am going to let it go where it needs to go. So theoretically, a lot, most of our taxpayers won't be paying an increase in property tax. Any other thoughts?
I'll, I'll chime in, I've been really impressed with our staff and their flexibility and their innovative ability. This is, this is an ongoing continuum of change. And I think, I think our staff has done a fantastic job of, of trying to anticipate and adjusting to what's, what's going on. So my congratulations and my thanks.
So Mayor, the headline would read budget, no new taxes, correct?
I hope so.
I mean, that's what, what this budget is anticipating, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's what's critical to, looks like, to put it in other words, what the mayor's already previously said. When COVID hit, we didn't know what was to happen, you know, the governor was sending out doomsday reports and we didn't know how we were going to pay for things. And if you don't know how government works, well, the government pays for things with your taxes. And so to have essential services, there were some real discussions about how are we going to provide that? Well, you do that in one way by increasing revenue, and how do you increase revenue when you're the government, you raise taxes. And so it was a very real concern because our cities worked really hard, I know these gentlemen to my right and to my left have worked really hard on, on taxes and fiscal responsibility for this city, and thanks to the leadership of our staff and our city manager and maybe most importantly, our finance director, Gail Cook, we're in a great place. And we've been able to basically put a budget together because the numbers weren't as bad as we thought. And it's going to be this councilman's perspective, and I think others up here, we're not going to raise your taxes this year according to this budget. Does that sound right?
And I think a lot of folks got things in the mail that their property went up in value. But what they need to understand is, is that also the city's tax rate will go down to reflect that there's no change. And I think I even had that at pharmacies, some folks came in and kind of upset that, you know, the value went up. Yeah, the value of your home did possibly go up, but that number at the end is going to stay the same because the tax rate's going to be reflected of that. So I support the budget on the same pretense.
You want else?
And we will know that for the folks that, that, we, we don't know what that new tax rate is going to be, certified tax rate, we don't know what that's going to be probably for another couple of months.
Well.
Or a month or when.
Sometime this month, it goes back and forth between the property sets or us and the state.
Okay.
And ultimately, probably mid to late July, we will know what that rate is, you all will pass it actually at the July meeting.
Okay.
And so hopefully soon, we'll at least know what the, what the number is.
Okay.
All things being equal, it's, like you say, not everybody's will be exact, you know, you may, but the overall number won't remain the same.
Right.
You know, sometimes we get criticized for being too conservative and having a good fund balance, and this is a great example of why we, we do these things because.
One thing, Gail, just we've been conservative on revenues the last seven, eight years, so when we had to make these cuts, we didn't have to make them as deep on revenues. Because we've got revenue seven hundred and fifty thousand, and then we've cut expenditures by about a half a million, and it's a pretty big chunk. Three of those, or a big part of that was three positions that are vacant that we didn't refund, we've kept them in the department. That way, if everything does get better, we can fund those positions, go back, and then we've cut probably two hundred thousand out of operational for all four departments. And we've done so probably with not reducing any services, and I think that's a big thing. Our tax rate is ninety-four cents, that's by far the lowest of any other city in the county, and I can promise you, our services are better than any of them.
I hear that all the time.
And we'll probably be back in the seventies after, after this, this next.
I'd say it'll be low eighties probably, our tax rate.
Low eighties, yeah. It's pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty good. Any other discussion? Thanks again, Gail and Roger and all the department heads too, I know y'all had to sharpen your pencil a little bit towards the end, and we're going to ask you to do the same thing that's coming, excuse me, that's coming up here. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Steny, Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman Farrar.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, ordinance number six fifty passes on second and final reading. Adoption resolutions, resolution number seven ninety-five, the electronic device and information security and use policy, your motion for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roger, would you like to speak on this?
I'll let you.
You knew I was going to say that, didn't you?
We're just trying to put some additional policies in place in regards to email and any type of electronic device that city employees have access to. Part of it is in regards to all the cybersecurity that we're facing.
Yeah.
Insurance policies that are available, we have to have some of this in place in order to get coverage, we're just trying to get there, this is a first start.
That was one of, going to be one of my questions, I'd written it down and I forgot about it, like the ransom wire that's happening in Knoxville and so forth, I mean, are we protected the best we can be and?
I don't know that anybody.
That, that's on the city's radar though, right? I mean.
Yes, we.
Probably don't want to say how protected or unprotected we are, but it's on, it's on your all's radar as leaders of our city.
It is, we, I'm not going to say that we're completely there, but I'd like to say we are, we do off-site as much as we can. But we are always looking to try to do better.
Okay.
Particularly with what's out there right now.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Steny, Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman Farrar.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, resolution number seven ninety-five passes. Resolution number seven ninety-six, this is the E D A grant application, water system improvements, your motion for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
And this is about what?
It's actually for C V, for a water expansion.
Up to the interstate, is that correct?
Yes.
Water line.
Oh, okay.
Was this, some of this has to go through the city, or is this a partnership, or?
No, any grant has to go through the city, yeah.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Steny, Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman Farrar.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, resolution number seven ninety-six passes. Resolution number seven ninety-seven, this is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one nonprofit organizations appropriations. Your motion for approval? Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? These are not changed any from last year.
Let me ask a question because we talked about this, I think, at one time about the Anderson County Chamber of Commerce. We are giving them money, but we are now out of the billboard business, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
With the exception of Green Macadoo.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that just one, we just have one for that?
It comes out of the state.
But it comes out of the money that we get from the states.
There, that's the only change is, is the Chamber of Commerce amount, and then you'll notice that.
It went up a little, right?
It went up.
From fifteen to twenty-five, is that right?
Yes.
And then one thing I did mention, the Green Macadoo budget, the last couple of years since we got the state money, we have been going over a little bit. So we've also made some cuts there to get it back down to under a hundred thousand, it was actually a part-time position we had to do away with for right now, but it's kind of like every department, we had to make cuts.
The only other change, by the way, is through sixty thousand dollars to the city school system, and we're no longer doing that through the foundation, so we don't have to list that here. It is a transfer directly to the school system.
So we're not, you're, we're not partnering with the education foundation, or?
We're just running the money straight to us now because they changed the threshold for surplus, because they were able to run it through us until using for the sixth-grade laptop program, and so they declined to call public services.
Okay, so are we still, are you still, is the, the elementary school system still associated with the education foundation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we'll just instead of funding the sixty thousand through them, it'll just come straight to us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Steny, Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman Farrar.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, resolution number seven ninety, seven ninety-seven passes. Anything under old business?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
It's been several months since I've been on a rant about magnet mills, I just wanted an update.
Jason Stokes, man, with.
Contractor and the plans were actually to be back today, if weather permitting, to finish it up. They thought they could have it done by Friday, of course, now it's supposed to rain every day this week, so.
What would the finished product look like?
Probably not as good as we want, but within code, probably grass at this point.
Like sowed grass, I mean, not weeds that's grown up, turned green and stuff, but I mean, like, do they have to sow it and?
Yes, they have to stabilize the erosion.
Really? So like that big hole in the front where all the water sits, I mean, that has, something will have to be done with that?
Yeah, this winter, it was, that was like a little duck pond going on out there.
Well, I mean, I bet what, I, I don't know anything about it, but I bet, I wonder if that's maybe a floor or that water's just not seeping through, of course, it's raining, it comes from the rain a lot. But I mean, like, what's our expectations? And I want to, if the expectations aren't what we want, then we need to change our expectations because they, they sure jacked us around a lot.
I think at this point, you know, clean up the rest of the gravel, there's some debris up on top of the hill.
Sow it.
Sow it, keep it mowed.
Keep it mowed.
And hopefully sell it.
But I mean, we're going to, if they, were they going to have it sowed by Friday, was that, did they, has it been given to them what our final?
That was my understanding, that they were willing to. And I talked with Albert Harb, a month ago, and his question was, does he need to close his case out? We told him, no, not yet.
Like, for instance, I use this as an example, I used to be at the St. Mary's Building up there. Between the St. Mary's Building or what used to be the St. Mary's Building and Clinton Home Center, used to be completely grass. Because of negligence on enforcement, over time, some saplings grew up, then those saplings turn into trees. Well, then code don't let you go back in and tell you you can cut down trees, instead, my point is, that up there looks nothing today like what it did at Clinton Drugstore nineteen ninety-one, so ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, that was a very nicely mowed area. But if you, if they don't do that, these saplings turn into trees, then they grow up, and then you can't make them go in there and cut it back down. I just want to make sure that what city staff is telling them, that we want this to look nice. Now, there can be clover and some dandelions, we're not asking for the perfect yard, but that has been our goal, right?
Correct.
Okay, and they know that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else under old business? Under new business, here, we have to have a motion on this? Do I, do I hear a motion on the acceptance of the City of Clinton nine-one-one Emergency Communications District Budget for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one fiscal year?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else under new business? County's going to do it.
Got it.
So, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Means adjourn. That's a good one.